States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight is a special budget meeting, and we have an agenda. I will just go straight down to item on the public hearing A. Mr. Michaels, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, proceed.
Tonight I am here to present the proposed budget for the fiscal 2019 city year. Here we have the city's organizational chart, which shows dozens of departments who report to the city administrator, who in turns reports to council, who is guided by the residents of Southfield. The proposed budget supports all of these departments and ultimately the Southfield community. In December, the mayor and council met to discuss their vision for the city and to establish goals in order to achieve that vision. The proposed budget supports those goals and is a tool in accomplishing that overall vision. Looking at the budget from a high level, including all funds, total revenues are anticipated at just shy of $187 million, with property taxes making up the largest portion at 33%, followed by water and sewer at 29%, and fees, permits, fines, and others at 26%. Continuing with the high-level view, total expenditures are expected to match revenues, with water and sewer being the largest use of funds at 30%, followed by public safety at 28%, and roads and facilities at 20%. Next, we'll look at changes in the overall budget from the 2017-18 year. At the total fund level, the significant changes from the prior year are a general fund increase of $3.7 million, which we'll review in detail in just a minute; major streets increasing $2.5 million; local streets decreasing $1.2 million; and water and sewer increasing $4.8 million. The changes in the street funds are mainly driven by capital projects, which we'll review on the next slide, and the increase in water and sewer is primarily related to costs passed through from our providers. Overall, the total budget for all funds increased by $9.7 million over 2017-2018 year. The three budgeted local street projects are for pavement rehabilitation in Section 12 in the northeast corner, Section 15 Evergreen Trail subdivision, and for safe routes to schoolwork in Section 24. Major streets includes northbound Northwestern Service Drive between Southfield and Loser, Nine Mile Road and Bridge, 11 Mile from Belta Arlington, and Lockdale. The significant projects in water and sewer are $4 million for lining inspections and rehabilitation, $2.9 million for the Section 15 Evergreen Trail subdivision repairs in conjunction with the local road work, and $2.4 million related to new and replacement meters and automated reading devices. Next, we'll review the proposed water and sewer rates for the coming year. Recall that there was no increase to these rates in the prior year, and the rates remained flat from the 2016-17 year through 2018. However, based on increases passed through to the city from our water and sewer providers, as well as ongoing capital needs, the proposed rates represent a 15% increase over the prior year. So how will the residents see this on their water bills? The rates that council approves are based on 1,000 cubic feet, because that's how the city is charged by the providers, but the city bills out customers in 100 cubic feet increments and splits the capital portion between water and sewer. So residents will see a new rate of approximately $4.94 per unit of water, currently at $4.13 per unit, and $6.75 per unit of sewage, which is currently at $5.94. Next, we'll look at revenue related to property taxes and funding received from the state. Looking at the revenue snapshot, the overview, property taxes represent approximately, although they represent one-third of total revenues generated for the city as a whole, they make up 65% of general revenue funds, general fund revenue, so we're heavily reliant upon tax revenues for operations. Taxable property values did increase slightly over the prior year, and we'll look at the history and future projections on the next slide. The proposed budget does include a 2.2% increase in the millage rate, which includes both an operating and debt service component, and we'll take a look at the rate breakdown in the subsequent slide as well. State shared revenue, the money the city collects from the state, did increase slightly and comprises approximately 9% of general fund revenues. This slide really tells a story. There's a 10-year history here of taxable property values, as well as projections out to 2025 future values. You can see that 2017 was in the bottom of the curve and represents a loss of approximately $1.4 billion in taxable value as compared to the 2009 due to the Great Recession. The impact this has had on the general fund and the city overall is devastating. The cumulative loss since 2012 is conservatively estimated at upwards of $120 million, with an estimated loss of $20 to $30 million in 2017 alone. Even projecting a 3% growth going forward and remembering that we're limited by both Proposal A and Headley, we won't attain 2009 levels within the foreseeable future. So what is Southfield's tax base? Who's the property tax revenue coming from? This slide shows the breakdown of taxpayers split between residential and the non-residential components. Over the past several years, the residential portion has been slowly growing from 35% in 2012 to 39% in 2018, but it is expected to hold steady in the coming year. Maintaining the right balance between these groups is vital to ensuring stability and growth. On the next slide, we'll look at the tax rates and the revenues generated. The operating tax levy increased by approximately 2.2%, primarily attributable to the police and fire pension contributions that the city is obligated to make. The non-operating levy also had a slight increase related to county drain debt. The result is a 2.5% increase in the total levy, and we'll examine the impact on the Southfield residents next. So this slide shows the services provided for the taxes that are paid. This is a breakdown of how much a resident living in a home with a market value of $100,000, a taxable value of about half that, $50,000, would expect to pay in taxes per year. Using this example, the 2.5% increase in the levy translates to a $33 increase over the prior year. The city portion, $1,354, is comprised of just under $600 for public safety, $330 for general city operations, $88 for parks and recreation, $140 for the library, and just under $200 for roads, appearance, drains, and other public services. City taxes make up approximately 30% of the taxes a Southfield homeowner will pay in the coming year. However, city taxes are not the only taxes our residents pay. Other jurisdictions include the county and education-related levies. Next, we look at the state shared revenue. State shared revenue's been creeping back up in recent years, and the state is estimating modest growth going forward. The city collected approximately $6.7 million in 2017, is expected to collect $6.9 in 2018, and just over $7 million in 2019. I did not include a graphic of the Act 51 monies that come from the state for major and local roads, as those have been virtually flat since 2000 at right around $5 million annually. It would've been a very boring slide. So we've looked at the budget at a high level, now we'll get into the details of the general fund. In total, general fund revenues are anticipated to increase by $3.7 million, or just over 5% from the 17-18 year. And I would like to point out the line on the right there that says "use of general fund balance is zero." The overwhelming majority of general fund revenue is tied to property values and comprises 65% of our operating revenues. A distant second is the fees, outside reimbursements, and other charges for service at 11%, followed by the revenue from the state at 9%. Next, we'll look at the significant changes from the prior year. The increase in the police and fire pension levy is again directly tied to the amounts expected to be contributed by the city. Sanitation charges were increased by $19.82 per household per year to cover the costs billed to the city. Building increases related to ongoing construction and related permit fees, as well as the apartment rental inspection program approved by council. Interfund reimbursements relate to charges from other funds within the city for support services provided. Next, we'll look at expenditures. At just under a combined $45 million, police and fire services continue to be the largest use of resources and make up 61% of all general fund expenditures. This amount exceeds the anticipated collections from the combined police and fire levies of $29 million by 15.9 million, leaving only $300,000 from the general operating levy to fund general operations, which are budgeted at $11.7 million. Overall, general fund expenditures increased by $3.7 million, or 5.3%, and total expenditures for all funds increased by $9.8 million, or 5.5%. Proposed capital projects that we previously discussed comprise $30 million of total expenditures and represent an increase of approximately $5 million over the 17-18 year. As human resources work to staff vacant positions, overall full-time employees have increased to better serve our residents' needs. Next, we'll look at the general fund expenditures in detail. Again, expenditures have increased by 5.3% in line with the budgeted revenues. Public safety, examined in detail on the next slide, represents 72% of expenditures, with general government operations trailing at 16%. This presentation of public safety is in line with how we presented in the CAFER, so it doesn't include just police and fire, it does include these other components as well. And the percentages shown here are in relation to general fund expenditures in total. So 36% of general fund expenditures are budgeted for police and make up half of the public safety expenditures. 25% of general fund expenditures, or one-quarter of the general fund budget, is dedicated for fire services. Next, we'll look at the significant changes in expenditures from the prior year. Building department costs have increased primarily related to personnel, including the new rental inspection program. The increase in the fire department includes approximately $1.3 million in personnel costs and $750,000 for payments to the equipment revolving fund for new vehicles. Decrease in support services is the result of several smaller reductions throughout the department, there was no one or two significant things there. The increase in police is almost entirely personnel costs. Finally, we'll look at our available reserves in the general fund. So this slide shows the various components of fund balance in the general fund as of our most recent audit. The non-spendable amount represents amounts already spent for items such as inventory and prepaid expenditures. Restricted funds are those that can only be used for specific purposes based on legal restrictions. This amount is our Metro Act funds received by the city from the state. Commitments represent amounts designated for specific uses by council action. Assigned are those funds that are intended for specific purposes but have not been legally restricted or committed by council. And then the unassigned fund balance represents what's left, and you'll often hear people refer to this as our rainy day fund. This is our reserve, this is our savings, this is what we can use to meet unexpected needs. As of 6/30/17, the general fund unassigned fund balance represented just under 18% of expenditures budgeted in the 2017-18 year. Best practices recommend an unassigned fund balance of 20% of expenditures, so we're almost there. And finally, I would like to thank you. Thank you to city council for your guidance and your efforts in ensuring a balanced, sustainable budget. This is a balanced budget, we are not relying on our reserves to fund continuing operations. Thank you to the city administrator for his continuing support and direction. Thank you to all of the city departments that worked with us to assemble the budget. The budget represents a months-long collaborative effort of the entire city staff. There are a lot of moving parts, and we could not do this alone. And finally, thank you to the fiscal services team, and especially Karen Ellie for all the work she put into this.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and the public hearing is now open.
Pamela Jarrow, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. The Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee have been keeping our eyes on Southfield, just like you guys have asked us to do. You know, every year, you squander, you rush, you push, and you try to get some kind of budget to present it, and it's already late this year. We have mentioned on numerous occasions, why don't you guys try to do a three-year budget? I keep hearing visionary, I keep hearing innovative, I keep hearing a city that's moving forward, the center of the center of it all, the all-American city, but why are you not trying to do the money business as it relates to the budget? What is wrong with doing a three-year budget? It would save you a lot of time to do other things like worry about the unions that you don't have contracts with. It would save you a lot of time so you don't have to crush concrete to try to make some money back on the purchase from Northland. I want you to consider doing a three-year budget. I want to see that you're going to resolve these union contracts before you start doing these budgets. And I want you to take care of the employees that take care of these residents and that take care of you all. The citizens are at the top of the organizational chart, and I'm going to come back during communications and be a little bit more specific, but in terms of the budget, if you have not put in there what our dispatch workers need for right now, then you're not finished with the budget. If you have not put in there what every single union needs to settle their contract, then this budget is not finished. So until you've done that, don't be so quick to vote on adopting this budget just because of the formality or the procedure that it's supposed to be done and it's supposed to be done by now. It's already late. So if you're gonna do the right thing, make it even later, but do a little bit better with it. And I'm gonna yield a minute of my time to give you something to think about, but I already know when I walk away from the podium, you guys are gonna rush it through, you're gonna vote. But residents, if you're watching me, and I've been around for a long time, and I'm honored and humbled that you call me when you need a problem resolved, we've got an election coming up in 2019. Don Fracassi is up for reelection, Myron Frazier is up for reelection, Dan Brightwell is up for reelection, and Tanya Morris. And I'm gonna ask you, from this day forward, start paying closer attention, 'cause I'm gonna keep you in the loop. Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is still open?
Goodun, Aben. My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan 48037. Tonight, I'd like to talk about Section 8.5. Section 8.5 in the Southfield Charter. 8.5 is entitled "Adoption of Budget," and I quote from Section 8.5. "At a special budget meeting to be held not later than the third week in June, the council shall by resolution concur," unquote. And this evening, council did indeed, or will indeed, and did indeed, concur, but it has been a long, long, long journey to get to here this evening. Let me explain. Section 8.2 of the Charter states, and I quote, "The mayor shall submit the budget to council at the first regular meeting in May," unquote. The mayor said at the Monday, May 21st meeting, that he didn't give council the budget at the first regular meeting in May, May 14th, because he felt that that meeting held at Lawrence Tech wasn't a regular meeting. Well, the updated city council meeting schedule states otherwise, and I quote, "May 14th, regular meeting at Lawrence Tech," unquote. If council's own meeting schedule says it's a regular meeting, it's a regular meeting. If it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's a duck. The mayor did indeed submit the budget to three council members at the May 21st regular meeting, but that was inappropriate because there was no quorum at that meeting, making that meeting unofficial, and the submitting of the budget null and void. Three weeks ago, May 29th, there was a special meeting and not a regular meeting. The Charter specifies a regular meeting and not a special meeting, making that meeting ineligible to submit the budget to council. The next meeting, June 4th, was ineligible, but the budget submission didn't appear on the agenda. So instead, council scheduled a regular meeting for June 11th, and the mayor finally submitted the budget to council. Duncan.
Public hearing is still open?
Good evening, Council. Fred Bunker, 24201 Garner. I have a handout created by Mr. Crowde describing the vision for the future regarding Northland and recent developments, now that I understand are gonna involve concrete construction. This is a budget that shows the expenses so far at Northland, and it doesn't include the $30 million of sewers Mr. Cruz voted to install, and apparently it doesn't show the $9 million the city spent to buy Northland that Mr. Seiver might know something about. Did we pay $9 million for Northland, Mayor Seiver? You know how much we paid for Northland?
$2.4.
$2.4. And was it, is this plan described residential, retail, and public use space? It's now been decided since fall that it's gonna be a commercial, heavy industrial cement plant. Is that a walkable community idea, City Council President?
Mr. Bunker, we are talking about this subject tonight.
I'm talking about the budget and where money went to process Northland that isn't in the record.
Okay, we'll continue.
$30 million went to install sewers on Northland, correct, Mr. Cruz, through the chair? Did we vote to install sewers that aren't included in the price so far? You don't remember? I was at the meeting at 10:00 AM on a Thursday where you voted to install $30 million worth of sewers on Northland Drive. Funny now that it's gonna be dispensing of the waste, Ms. Taylor, not up into the air, but down into the brand-new sewers. Mr. Cruz had everything to do with when he voted to install them at 10:00 AM on a Thursday. The meeting was announced at 2:00 PM the day before. Less than 24 hours in advance, this council met with Mr. Frazier, Mr. Fracassi, Mr. Seiver, and they voted to install sewers on Northland Drive. Would any of the people I've mentioned like to say they didn't vote to install sewers? Ms. Ward, did you hear they installed $30 million worth of sewers on Northland Drive? You never heard that. Would you like to see what they're claiming the only expense is so far, $6 million? Who paid the $30 million for the sewers that are gonna drain a cement factory? Was Northland designed by Mr. Crowde to be a cement factory, or did he spend years creating a master plan that describes Northland as a place to live and a walkable community? Do you wanna walk through a cement plant, Ms. Taylor? I thought you voiced some objection then.
Mr. Bunker, you're three minutes up, sir.
Pardon me.
Yes, sir, thank you.
The city should care about the people who live here, not people who wanna build cement.
Thank you. Public hearing is still open? Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Counsel?
Mr. Brightwell.
Mr.?
I just have to speak up about the, there is no cement plant being built at Northland. There is a temporary batch plant that takes less than a quarter of an acre, and it's just for several months in this construction season. What was reported in the newspaper was an error.
Three months.
That same batch plant was also there last year, taking less than a quarter of an acre of land. Most of what you're talking about made absolutely no sense, sounded very foolish. There's no $30 million in sewers. Where you're getting your information, Mr. Bunker, there's absolutely no sense.
Minutes from the meeting at 10:00 AM.
There were no sewers put in. I don't know where you get this stuff from.
Did you write this letter asking me to sell my property to the city, Mr. Zorn?
I never asked you to, never sent you a letter asking you to sell your property. I said, "When you're ready to sell your property, please let us know."
You said, "Please don't hesitate to contact me."
Yeah, please don't hesitate.
Can't get through to you on the phone. Can I speak to you here?
Mr. Bunker, whenever you're ready to sell your property, let me know. That's not a commitment to purchase, sale.
Did Seiver talk to the city administrator about our discussions on the phone regarding my property? Let the record show, the mayor knows things that he's not able to speak about.
Okay, Mr. Bunker.
Due to his involvement in charter school construction as a public school employee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bunker. The audience might wonder why I let this conversation go on, because I think it was coming to a conclusion, and if we can get some things concluded without, at this particular moment, that's why I allowed it go.
You're right.
Okay, I got you, sir. Counsel, we've had the presentation of the budget, you have any questions? Mr. Manobon?
Thank you. This is, it's really not more of a question, more of a statement, but thank you to the city administrator and to his team for putting together this budget. I know that it sometimes gets tricky, but for the residents that are here or watching this, one of the things I always hear as a councilperson is Southfield taxes are so high, but we provide excellent services for those taxes. And as a comparison for other Oakland County communities, I just wanted to point out a couple other jurisdictions and their tax rates and how they compare to Southfield. So as an example, Southfield is 26.6 square miles and will be having a tax rate, and this is just for the city, of about 27 mils. When you compare that to other cities, as an example, so we're looking at 27 mils, you have Hazel Park, which is 2.8 square miles, and they have a tax rate of 38 mils. Madison Heights, which is seven square miles, has 25 mils. Oak Park, 5.5 square miles, 36 mils. Again, Southfield's at 26. Clausen and Ferndale also are right around 26 to 28 mils for their tax rate, and those communities are all much smaller than Southfield. And as it was mentioned by our finance, our deputy finance director, was that 30 cents for every dollar that goes to, that you pay in taxes, goes to the city. And if you look, when you compare, smaller cities are actually getting more money per dollar paid to the city operating costs. Yes, we have higher taxes, but there's a lot of other things that go into it. We have schools, we have SMART, we have the zoo, we have the DIA. So just so you know, we are looking at the budget, we're going through it. I know through the finance committee takes a very deep look at everything, and we're trying to use the tax dollars that we collect efficiently and making sure that they're not, we're not wasting. we're not wasting any money when you look at the grand picture within Oakland County. So that being said, you know, please, please remember that the city, it has one of the, is not one of the lowest, but when you look at other cities that are smaller, our tax rate is comparable or better than some of those others. Another, something else that I was thinking of, and I've had a brief conversation with our council chair of the Finance Committee, Councilwoman Taylor, that the Finance Committee does an excellent job going through monthly different budget items, adjustments, and different things like that. But I don't know if this, and again, I would have to talk about it as a council, but I like to, we briefly spoke about, there's still a lot of details, but maybe to have a Finance Committee offshoot or a smaller subcommittee that would report to the Finance Chair, that would look at things that the Finance Department may not necessarily look at. Different efficiencies, other ways to generate revenue, other ways to save money. It wouldn't do, it wouldn't duplicate anything that the Finance Committee does, but would perhaps look at other things that they may not have time to do or maybe in a bigger picture. But I would, I would leave that up to our Finance Chair and our Council President to maybe discuss a little bit more in a, and we can discuss as a council, to see if there is a will to maybe look at many different options of how to, you know, figure out some of our budget issues, raise revenue, be more efficient, things like that. So again, with that being said, thank you very much to the administration and its team for working on this budget using zero fund balance dollars. Thank you.
Ms. Taylor?
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Mandelbaum, we did speak briefly about that, and we are going to discuss it in the committee of the whole, well, we'll talk about it in finance first, then we'll bring it back to the committee of the whole for further discussion. The ideas are nice, but just so that you know, the Finance Committee is working on a lot of things, and we will be bringing those through to the full council. Some are ratios, expenditures, to revenues, to, I mean, we have a whole bunch of things that we're working on right now. But our first priority was the CAFER, which we did get completed this year, and then the budget. So now we're opening up to other things that we'll be bringing forward, but that's a wonderful idea, and we are looking at that. Another idea that I did speak with our city administrator about was talking to our department heads, our managers and directors, and asking them to present to us a value analysis for the various departments so that we can say what they have to offer. And then we can take a look at such departments, such as maybe our dispatch, and say, can we use that as a revenue source? Can we go to other localities and say, hey, we offer these services? And, you know, put a price on that. So those are some of the things that we are currently looking at, we just haven't brought them through to the full council yet. But thank you.
The administration, also our deputy finance, I really appreciate the presentation tonight. It was thorough. It was pretty much spot-on with respect to what's happening to the city from a financial standpoint. I worked with the Finance Committee and also the administrator and the deputy financial director over the past years. As the former Finance Committee Chair, I pretty much developed approximately 20 ratios that will be coming forward sometime in the near future relative to our financial performance on a monthly basis. And I've talked to the administrator, and I think on a going-forward basis, and I think this is definitely being proactive, we are asking to take a look at everything in the city, anything that's being done, any best practices in the country that might be appropriate for the city of Southfield. So it goes without saying that we are being proactive, we are taking a look at a lot of things. And Southfield is a very dynamic city, is a progressive, progressive city, and we are looking at best practices from every, for every avenue here in the city. And the administrator in the city should be commended that we were able to increase our fund balance by $2.3 million. That is, most people, and most companies and municipalities appreciate the fact that we did not go in the red to balance a budget. So that's a, that's a good thing, that we did not go into our fund balance to balance the budget. So with respect to that, counsel, you've heard the presentation?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Frazier.
I'd like to make a statement, and I'll offer a motion. I would also like to say thank you to the, to our deputy finance director for the presentation. It was a very professional way and easily understood. I've been here for a number of years, and I've witnessed presentations in a lot of different formats, and this was a fairly easy one to understand. But I do want, I do want to say that even though we have what is considered, and I don't want to say generous, because it's not, it, we still haven't met what the recommendation is as fund balance or rainy day fund. But we do have a little comfort, but I would like the residents to know that as part of the Finance Committee, we still have a lot of hurdles that we have to maneuver. There's, we have a lot of expenses ahead of us. So far, we've, we've met those expenses, and we've done it with the help of our Finance Department and our city administrator. And we've, we've kept all the services at a, at a top-flight manner that you expect. But we do have some charges, challenges ahead of us. So, and some, some acronyms that most of you are not familiar with is one of the biggest ones that we have to address, and that's called OPEB. You may hear more and more about that. But that's one of the things that we're going to have to work on very diligently. But today, we're fine, and we'll be fine in the future, but we don't have all that extra money to throw around doing things that are frivolous. And with that, I will say, hearing the budget presentation, I move that we adopt the 2018, 2019 budget provided by the Finance Director, Deputy Finance Director, in the amount of
Approved.
It moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Fracassi, that we approve the budget as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The budget for 2018, 2019 is approved. Thank you. We have no site plan. The next item is to Communications. Ms. Gerald.
Residents, you already know who I am, so I'm going to get right to the point. I want you to close your eyes. Whenever you hear a siren, someone in public safety is risking their lives for you, someone you love, or one of your neighbors. But it's the 911 dispatch workers that answer those emergency calls. It is the 911 dispatch workers that collect that very valuable information that is the difference between life and death. It is our 911 dispatch workers that pass on that information to public safety for the right siren to turn on. Our dispatch workers know when to send police, fire, or both. Now, our city administrator, he is a trained emergency manager. I want all the residents to know, as I alluded to earlier, the city of Southfield is in contract talks with our 911 dispatch workers. Whenever we are in contract talks, there's threats of outsourcing or laying off, and we're sick and tired of it. These dispatch workers about 12 years ago took a pay cut so that you could balance the budget, so that we would not have an emergency manager like Fred Zorn. The dispatch workers have not had a raise in 10 years. Now, you've made your wife's friend whole, Shelley Freeman, with her raise. Other people have gotten a raise that are in what I call your friends and family club, but why not our dispatch workers? You've spent a lot of money on Northland, buying it, and all the expenses, and three years later, coming up, you still don't have a viable developer that wants to buy it. You've spent all this money on art and art restoration. Are you selling it yet? But what you have not done is invested in the employees. You have not invested in our 911 dispatch workers. Now, let me just tell the residents a little something about our amazing dispatch workers. In the calendar year of 2017, dispatch handled 51,073 calls for the police department, 14,255 calls for the Southfield Fire Department, and 4,091 service calls for Lathir Village. That's a total of 70,819 calls for 2017. It should be noted that our dispatch workers handle Lathir Village 911. How dare you guys try to do this study on the down-low without even bringing Lathir Village to the table? The mayor of Lathir Village didn't even know about this until I called and asked, what is your thought about the city trying to do this? So residents, I appreciate you trusting me all the years. I appreciate your calls. If they vote for this, vote them out.
Mr. Mullin.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 480037. Tonight, I'd like to talk about the qualifications for membership on the Board of Review. The city's website states only that, and I quote, "Members are registered voters of the city," unquote. This is only one half of the story. Section 9.10 of the city charter states that "membership shall also be," and I quote, "consist of three freeholders," unquote. Yes, three freeholders. You heard me right, freeholders. Currently, there are three persons on the Board of Review plus three alternates. I wonder how many of these six individuals are both freeholders and registered voters concurrently in this city? Surely not all six. Why? Because when it comes to enforcing the charter and attention to detail, this council is historically sloppy. Merci.
There being no further communications on this.
Mr. President.
Mr. Frazier.
I normally don't do this, but each time that Mr. Mullin comes to the microphone, he challenges us on making errors, and is rightfully so. You know, if we made an error, we've made an error. And he's a detail expert. I'm looking at his form that he filled out to speak here tonight, and it says, and if you recall, when he gave his address, it's Post Office Box 155, Southfield, 48037. What he has written down here is 48075. So I guess every, all of us make mistakes. So I appreciate the fact that you're trying to keep us on track, but first present yourself as an expert before you start criticizing others. Thank you.
Thank you. I signed up for Communications.
That's in the next meeting.
I had three meetings tonight.
That's in the next meeting.
Excuse me?
That's in the next meeting.
If I knew a meeting was taking place now, I would, oh, so the city clerk's office has no obligation to inform a resident whether there's one meeting or whether there's two?
All right.
I would like to speak for public, public hearing slash communications at each meeting tonight. Didn't I sign up for that?
You signed up for the later meeting, sir.
All right.
When the meeting schedules posted?
It's posted right there on the meeting board.
All right. Okay. All right, all right, hold it, hold it.
A week ago, I made, and I attempted to appear at meetings tonight. I didn't know there was more than one.
Let him speak.
If there was, I would have signed up for three meetings.
Let him speak.
Is there other meetings tonight that I've signed up for?
There's another meeting tonight, and it behooves everyone who wishes to speak to look at the calendar and to confer with the clerk's office to make sure everything is scheduled as planned. This particular meeting was a special meeting to deal specifically with the budget, and we will recess now and go into our next committee of the whole meeting in the council study. Thank you.